All right. It's about that time. We should get started. Is that okay? I'd like to call the Planning Commission meeting to order. Welcome, everybody. Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Can we do the roll call, please?
Chair Don Robertson is excused. Commissioners Miller.
Here.
Malloy. Angel Ford. Fountain. Baxter. Rochiers. McLean. And Vice Chair Garrett Kounarowski.
Here. Thank you. All right. Tonight on the agenda, we have one set of minutes for consideration for the September 20th, 2023 meeting. Did anybody have any additions or corrections? All right. Hearing none, the minutes will stand approved as presented. And then we're going to go ahead and open it up for citizen comments. Let's see. This portion of the agenda is reserved for any members of the public that would like to address the Planning Commission on any topic that is not related to any items on the agenda tonight. If you'd like to address the Planning Commission, please come forward, sign in and state your name before your comments. Seeing none, move on to the public hearing portion of the meeting. Tonight, we have two public hearings on the agenda. And before opening the hearings, I will ask the city attorney to review the public hearing process.
Thank you. Just in time to get it open. Tonight's hearing will be pursuant to the quasi judicial procedures set out in ORS 197.797. At the start of the hearing, we will ask commission members to disclose any ex parte communications, bias, or what's the other one?
Conflict of interest.
Conflicts of interest. It's funny, I drafted a condensed version of this because everybody got sick of me reading the whole thing. And I left out a sentence. The applicable substantive criteria for this hearing will be addressed in the staff report to council. Testimony may be in oral or written form, but must be directed towards the criteria outlined in the staff report, the comprehensive plan of the city's land use regulations. Any issues raised must be accompanied by statements and evidence sufficient enough to allow the commission and party members an opportunity to respond. Please note that failure to raise an issue, including constitutional issues, by the close of the hearing will prevent any appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals. If there are any questions about these procedures, please let me know. Otherwise, you may open the hearing and ask for any ex parte or conflicts of interest or bias.
Okay. We'll open up the first public hearing. Thank you. Planning files CPMA-23-03, ZMA-23-03, AR-23-04, and CU-23-03. We have a proposal to change the comprehensive plan and zoning map designation from residential mixed density to mixed use, then to develop and operate a convenience store and gas station for the property on the northwest corner of Stoltz Hill Road and Airport Road. Is there any conflict of interest, ex parte communication, or bias to report?
So I don't have necessarily a conflict of interest, but I do own a piece of property that is near this area. It's down the street on Airport. Again, I don't think it's conflict of interest, but I just want to put it on the record.
Do you believe that the decision tonight would have any impact financially on your property?
No.
Is there any reason to believe that if any decision this commission would make would either negatively or positively affect your property economically?
I don't believe so. You know, it is a property that's near that intersection. And so depending what happens around it, if those values of their prop-- those properties increase, it could affect mine, but you know, I don't have control over that.
That's distant enough. I mean, that's just general area stuff. So it doesn't sound like, I think your disclosure of, even if it was a potential conflict of interest, is adequate.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. I'll turn it over to staff for the staff report.
Thank you. Sharing my screen. Here we go. So good evening. As introduced before you tonight is a slew of different applications for the proposal to change the land use designation on the site and to develop the site with a convenience store and a gas station. The property is located on the northwest corner of Airport Road and Stoltz Hill Road. The current property designation for the comprehensive plan and zoning designation is residential mixed density. And the proposed designation switch would be to mixed use. In the immediate surrounding of the property, to the north, south, east, and west are all properties within the comprehensive plan designation and zoning designation of residential mixed use-- mixed density, excuse me. And the developments include a mix of single-family homes as well as a convenience store at the southern corner of the intersection. There are public utilities available in the site. Along Stoltz Hill Road are all utilities that are available. And then along Airport Road, there is water and storm drainage available. So there is utilities to service the site. To start the conversation off, we can discuss the comprehensive plan and zoning amendment proposals as outlined in your staff report. That was included as part of the record. There's a pretty detailed analysis as to the purpose behind the request. Generally speaking, when you do a comprehensive plan and zoning map amendment, one or more condition needs to be met. Whether it's an update to data demonstrates significant difference in trends from previous data, new data reflects a new or previously undisclosed public need, new community attitudes represent significant departure from previous attitudes, or there's statutory changes that affect the applicability. We included in the staff report that there were several recent changes to city policy that does impact and identify a change in attitude or statutory changes. Some of those changes include, as part of the most recent transportation system plan, the proposed bypass that was included in the previous transportation system. Vehicle trips off of the main highway, Highway 20. And it would have routed them from Highway 34 around the western edge of the city to the southern portion of the city. With the bypass being removed, the lowest portion of the city that can be bypassed using a similar route is Airport Road. So it's a heavily trafficked segment of roadway in the city between Denny School Road and Highway 20. And so with the change of the bypass, this is now kind of an additional commercial opportunity in the city. The economic opportunity analysis that the city just adopted in September actually identifies an option and a consideration for the city to evaluate opportunities to rezone land to allow for more smaller scale commercial uses along Airport Road. And so with those changes, along with the Planning Commission action in 2021 to actually consider gas stations specifically and allowing an expansion of opportunities of gas stations within the city, all of those equates that there has been a change in position that would authorize or consider this to move forward as more of a commercial use than residential on Airport Road. In the staff reports, there is a slew of findings associated with the comprehensive plan and zoning map amendments. But that sets the basis of the tone where it's the intent of Airport Road to be more of a commercialized road over time. And so with that, by changing the designation to mixed use, it allows for more commercial activity to occur beyond what the residential mixed density allows for. So to go on to the actual development proposal, the subject site is just over an acre in size. It does situate itself on the corner of the intersection. There is a tract of land that kind of sits between the true intersection location and the property boundary. But the way that the corner lots are defined in our code, it's if you have frontage on two different streets that intersect at less than 135 degrees. You are a corner lot. So because you have frontage on Stoltz Hill Road to the north and you have frontage on Airport Road, it is a corner lot and it is just a tract of land, not a buildable piece of land. And so it meets the standard requirements of being on a corner for gas stations. As part of the code requirements for gas stations, it must be a minimum 12,000 square foot lot. It must be at an intersection that is either two minor arterials or an arterial and a collector road. And then it has lighting standards for the canopy, which have been incorporated and we'll discuss in a little bit. So Airport Road and Stoltz Hill Road meet the requirement. Stoltz Hill is considered a collector road. Airport Road is considered a minor arterial. So the property with the change of comprehensive plan and zoning designation to mixed use is therefore eligible to apply for a gas station use. So to meet the standards of the zoning code in terms of setbacks, the convenience store would maintain a minimum 10-foot setback from the side property line, which is the western property line. And then all other setbacks would be maintained at a minimum of 20 feet. As part of the code, it does say that parking and drive aisles are authorized within the setback areas so long as you're providing a minimum of a five-foot landscape buffer between the property line and the drive aisle and parking areas. And the applicant is providing that with a minimum of a six-foot and change landscape planter along the Stoltz Hill Road frontage. And then it's closer to a 12-foot setback along airports. For parking, for a convenience store, it basically requires four parking spaces for every 1,000 square feet for the convenience store. So that would require 16 parking spaces. A total of 17 are provided on site. For the gas station use, our development code does not establish a parking requirement associated with the gas station because there is the general operation where you are parking at the actual pump island. And then if you were going into the convenience store, you're either at the pump island, going to the convenience store to pay, or you are then moving into the convenience store use and parking in the convenience store parking lot. So there's not an official designation of a parking requirement for the gas station. So they're sharing the total 17 parking spaces and four bicycle parking spaces. In terms of access and circulation, there are two driveways that are proposed. One is at the northern end of the property. And this would be a shared driveway with shared access for two flag lots, which are along this northern portion here, that were approved for single-family or duplex developments. And so the access for this three-lane width wide drive aisle would provide access for the service station, convenience store, as well as the two residential properties. There is also a driveway located on Airport Road. That's about 115 feet from the intersection. And that would provide access to going westbound on Airport Road. So it would be considered a right-in, right-out driveway. You would not be able to turn left from this intersection, from this driveway and go into-- That condition of a right-in, right-out was bared out through a traffic impact analysis that was done. The traffic impact analysis identified a couple of requirements to be off-site improvements. One is the right-in, right-out. Another one is to do a raised barrier along Airport Road that would separate the lanes of traffic to ensure that there's no cross-traffic created. And then the major item would be that Stoltz Hill and Airport is slated for a signalized intersection. And it specifically states within the TIA that based off of traffic loads and anticipated traffic loads associated with the proposed use, that signal must be fully operational before this proposed use were to actually commence operations. So that's included in the traffic impact analysis, which is also included as a condition of development if the Planning Commission were to approve the proposal. As part of a conditional use permit application, which is required for the gas station, there are several different factors that are required to be evaluated. This is well stipulated in the staff reports and the proposed findings. We've talked about access and traffic. Noise generation from the site is going to be limited to a basic convenience store. So you know, people getting in and out of their cars, basically. Vibration and dust generation and erosion is largely related to construction-related activities and isn't anticipated once the use is operational. In terms of exhaust and emissions, although it is a gas station, you have to have your vehicle off during times of use. And so you're not creating an idling situation like you are in, you know, a drive-through restaurant or something like that. So the emissions are pretty standard for a traditional convenience store and is not anticipated to be significant. The largest consideration for the conditional use permit mitigation is the light, glare, and visibility. You do have the canopy structure. As part of the code development, we did put a specific requirement that says that any lighting affixed to the canopy structure must be fully within the canopy structure itself. It can't hang down below. And then there's also a requirement that you need to meet, still be able to meet the lighting standards for traditional developments within the city where it's very limited by the time it hits the property line. So we'd be requiring them to submit a photometric plan that demonstrates how the lighting is going to spill around the property and make sure that it meets those standards. We've also included conditions regarding the landscaping, as there is the understanding that headlights are going to be moving around the property, that there is a landscaping buffer or some sort of treatment that blocks the headlights from, you know, expanding onto neighboring residential properties as well. So with those conditions in place, that mitigates the concerns regarding the lights and the glare. And then the rest of it is pretty standard beyond that. So we've covered the comprehensive plan designation change and the basis for initiating it, the development of the convenience store and the gas station, and the specific conditions regarding the TIA and addressing any of those conditional use mitigation concerns. And so with that, I will conclude my report and I'm available to answer questions. Oh, sorry. I take that back completely. One more thing. We did have two written comments that were provided between the time that we had the packets produced and this evening. I have a very brief synopsis of what those comments were. The comments have been provided to the Planning Commission ahead of time. They are available for the public to review during the meeting. And they've also been provided to the applicant as well. Generally speaking, the first one from Ms. Benjamin is in support of the developments, but has general concerns regarding traffic and specifically makes the request that the light at the intersection be operational before the uses. And that is obviously taken care of as part of the TIA. The second letter came in from the president of the Applegate Landing HOA, or one of the major property owners. It states that it is on behalf of the HOA. And they oppose the proposal, specifically the change of the comprehensive plan designation to allow for more commercial activity to occur on the property and ties it largely to traffic impacts, bringing additional commercialized traffic onto a dead-end street. And then the continuous traffic flow back and forth on what is perceived as a residential street for all hours of the night. The applicant has identified in their narrative that they plan on closing between 11:00 PM and 5:00 AM. So it will not be a full 24-hour operation based off of the applicant. But that doesn't necessarily negate the concerns that have been presented by the commenter. So with that, I will conclude my report and then open it up to anybody.
Okay. Thank you. So I did have a question, if I may. Can they change their hour of operations after the fact? Yes, ma'am. Anyone else have any questions? Staff.
I had questions about this in regard to the intersection specifically. I noticed on the proposed plan, there's that little bit of land that was alluded to. With the proposal that we're going to have potentially a gas station and increased traffic. If you go to a previous slide, the layout shows three lanes to enter the gas station from Stoltz Hill. You got, it looks like a lane to go to turn in, a left-turn lane to turn out, a right-turn lane to go out, if I'm reading that correctly. But then at Stoltz Hill, to actually go onto Airport, there's only one lane to exit from Stoltz onto Airport. And to me, it just looks totally silly not to use that bit of vacant land and put in a additional lane so that you can have a dedicated left-hand turn from Stoltz Hill, exiting the apartment complex onto Airport. And regardless as to whether or not the gas station goes through or not, I think that needs to be included in the redevelopment of that intersection.
So I'll bring it back to the application. The TIA evaluated whether or not the development proposal triggers a required dedicated left-turn lane on that portion of the intersection. It was evaluated and it was determined that this development and the build-out scenario as currently understood would not trigger that specific requirement to occur. So as part of the development review, it is not a requirement. If you would like to talk further about the overall design of the intersection, we can do that as part of the Planning Commission comments, I would recommend. And we can discuss further what your considerations would be at that point. But for the application itself, the TIA has not identified that that is needed. And so the design of the street as it sits right now meets the criteria for the application.
How much did it miss it by?
I don't have that answer.
Yeah, I don't have that answer in front of me either. Basically, that was the whole premise of the TIA in the first place, was to see, does this warrant a left-out? And the answer and the results were, no, it did not. We didn't look into how close it was and how close it wasn't. You're built out in that scenario. So you're at a cul-de-sac, there's no other traffic. So that's what they used as criteria to look at that. So that's the direction that we went.
I would be interested to know by how much of a margin it missed it. I could see with the increasing development on there, at some point, there could be-- I would hate for this intersection to get established and then it get cluttered up.
Yeah. And I don't disagree with you, but as a condition of development, we can't condition that--
Understood.
--it doesn't warrant that.
Understood.
And the city does not have ownership of that property for us to do that.
Okay.
So just to clarify, so was the continued development of that entire area considered within the TIA?
The full build-out.
Okay.
The full build-out. Which with this and the two or three duplexes up there, that would be build-up.
That was my only question. With the semis, with the tankers coming in? They come in off of Airport? No, they can't because they can't go over the bridge coming from Denny to Airport. They have to come down Oak and around and back up Airport? Are they changing that?
I do not know the circulation of the vehicle traffic for truck pickup and drop-off. That might be something the applicant can better describe. The driveway on Airport Road does allow for a right-in as well as a right-out. And so they could potentially enter on the driveway on Airport Road, or they could potentially enter on the Stoltz Hill Road and then enter through that secondary.
I just, I'm just looking at the swing. I know how my semis have to come through and the swing on that, it might not quite be wide enough. So--
The applicant would be an appropriate person to answer that question.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, and just also looking at it, seems pretty silly that you got three lanes, you know, to enter the gas station, but you don't have three lanes to get onto Stoltz Hill.
So I have a question. So I think we addressed that the light is going to go in before occupancy is granted, which I think addresses some of the concerns that we received via email. And that light's going to go in regardless, right?
That is correct.
Yeah.
The light will go in regardless.
And it's planned to. Could you review with us the delay maybe? And can I ask that at this point in getting the light in?
The delay of the signal? Right now, we're working through right-of-way issues. And as soon as we have those wrapped up, it'll be ready to go.
So with the public comments here, it's unfortunate that we don't have these people physically with us to explain their comments or whatever. But James Lutz here is, you know, bringing up that-- as far as he's concerned, in the homeowners association, that they don't want the gas station there. And they're objecting to the rezoning to allow it. I would be-- So I would not want to go against the wishes of the homeowners that are going to be there at that apartment complex. I don't know-- He says that he's stating it on behalf of all of those residents that are there. I would be interested to know if he could show that the residents actually there at that facility are against it. Myself, I don't have a thing against the gas station or not. But if that really is the consensus of the people there, I-- just one comment, though, one email, I don't know if that's weighty enough to disapprove this proposal.
Please lean into the mic.
When Applegate was being proposed, there were complaints about traffic and basically the same complaints that Ms. Lutz has. And when I read those complaints, I thought, you know, if you're going to come to Lebanon and you're going to eat at the dinner table of opportunity and prosperity, you need to let other people do the same thing. I mean, you just can't come in and say, this is what I want, but I don't want anybody else to have it. And personally, I think that a little convenient gas station, it's a great idea there. We need to promote business and economic development in this town. And there are some that just don't want that. But that's not the way that Lebanon is going. So when somebody complains about something that they made excuses for in the past, it doesn't carry a lot of weight with me. And that's just my personal feeling on that.
I agree with that sentiment. I guess where I'm at is-- one email, I don't know if I can really treat that as being the voice-- as being the voice of the residents there. But if there is a large sentiment among the people that live there that it's not wanted, and they're the ones that are living there, I can respect that. The other thing is there is an existing convenience station. I agree, a new one would be nicer and whatnot. But we're being asked to consider zoning change. And if the people that are already going to be living here really, truly do object, I would like to know that that's the case. I don't want to override the wishes of the people that are actually living there.
Well, if they're here, I'd love to hear from them.
So that's coming up, we can...
Well, I was going to say, what I will say is a public notice went out to every single property owner within a 250-foot radius of the property. So it included everybody pretty much along the cul-de-sac. So everybody was fully notified. The letter identifies that he is representing the HOA. I have no data as to whether or not a meeting was had and residents voted on whether or not to send a single submittal or not. We just have to take the letter at the face value. But this public meeting is open to every single member of the public to participate. And we have to take the comment based off of what comment is provided.
I had a question, sorry. Is that, can I ask you a question? Okay. Well, I'm sorry, not used to this yet. The median barrier that is recommended, is that the responsibility of the... Is that, that's not the responsibility of the city to pay for it, correct?
That's on the developer to pay for it.
And that would not go in otherwise without this, okay?
No.
So I have a question. If the median is going to be there on Airport, currently for Grandpa's Grocery, my husband's the Pepsi guy, and they have to park in the middle of the road to deliver and access that store. So if there's a median there and they're still running Grandpa's out of there, where are those truckers supposed to go? And have we considered that, or is that for them, or?
I guess we'll call the police department and have them sign them for parking illegally. I think that will work itself out. How's that? I mean, there's going to be some time there where you're going to have some overlap and we're going to have to deal with some of those issues, right? But that median will likely be one of the last things that goes in because we're not going to issue occupancy until the signal's there, and that's one of the last things.
I think all of this is part of our growing pains.
Yeah, it is.
I mean, because we've looked at it.
Well, and I hate that they...
Commercial-wise, our truck routes, the semis, for them to be able to turn the width of the roads, it's just something we have to keep in the forefront as we allow the development to happen, so.
All right, anybody else? Questions of staff? No, okay. If there's no further questions, I'll open the public hearing and welcome the applicant to come forward and provide testimony.
Good evening. Brian Vendetta, representing the applicant with Udell Engineering and Land Surveying. And with me?
Hi, Laura LaRocque, also with Udell. Thank you for having us this evening. So I'll go ahead and start, and then I'll hand it over to Brian. He can talk about site circulation and utilities and things of that nature. But as always, Kelly does a great thorough job giving an overview, so it doesn't leave me too much to add on to her presentation. So what I'll do instead is just recap it quickly. Before you, as you know, there's four applications for your consideration. Two of these are kind of processed at the same time, a comprehensive plan map amendment and a zone map amendment. Comprehensive plan map amendment is to change that long-range plan map for the city. And the zone map amendment is to implement the zone from the comprehensive plan so that the current development code regulations apply under that zoning designation. As Kelly mentioned, we feel that the comprehensive plan that was created probably more than 20 years ago is kind of at the end of its planning horizons. Policy changes have occurred. There's been a tremendous amount of growth within the community. And I think all of us who live here can recognize that Airport Road is a major corridor in and out of the city of Lebanon, as is Schultz. With anticipated future development, these will continue to be major corridors. We feel that a commercial enterprise along these, especially this intersection, would be advantageous to the community to serve those needs, whether just quick convenience store stops or fueling stations for folks that won't necessarily need to go all the way into the downtown corridor to fill those services. There's data to back that up, as Kelly has mentioned. There's policies, changes that have occurred. We have new planning data that suggests that changing the zoning designation from this residential medium density to a mixed-use density wouldn't adversely affect any of those zones or what's planned to be constructed within those. And that this would be a good fit based on the roadway classifications for the site is located. The other two applications, the first one is an administrative review. That's for the convenience store portion of the site. The convenience store use is actually permitted today under the current zoning designation. It's also permitted under what is proposed for the mixed-use zone. As the convenience store is sited, it's just over 4,000 square feet. It's oriented towards kind of the central-west portion of the site. It complies with all the siting standards such as setbacks and lot coverage and things of that nature. In addition, there is landscaping in the yard setback requirements as well as some fencing that's proposed to help create some buffer between adjacent uses and to create some sort of screening between those uses. The last portion of the application is the conditional use, and that is specific to just the fueling stations. So as you can see in the site plan, those are oriented towards the center of the site. The site orientation of the fuel station is to allow transportation and fuel trucks to circulate throughout that site easily. And they are set back considerably from abutting setbacks. Typically, these canopies do have a box illumination, so it's kind of a glow instead of a spotlight. There is lighting standards already in the development code that will require a lighting plan that demonstrates that we're at so many lumens and that light is not shining on adjacent properties. So the lighting standards are already spelled out in the code. Also conditioned, per staff's recommendation, just to make sure that that lighting plan is produced at the time of construction and verified so that item can be reviewed by staff. I think that point, I'll turn it over to Brian. He'll talk a little bit about site circulation.
Super, thanks, Laura. So didn't come really with the presentation, but there were some questions of commissioners, so I thought I'd walk through and maybe try to answer some of those. So specifically, I think there was a question about fueling tanker trucks getting on and off the site and through the intersection efficiently. So our company is also under contract, working with Kittleson and the city of Lebanon to design the intersection. So we've ran auto-turn simulations through the intersection in all four directions with those larger vehicles. And we've designed the curb ADI, lane widths, stop bars, such that they will allow those trucks to get through. Not to say there won't be some minor overturning, maybe getting into another lane from here to there slightly, but they all satisfy the requirements for the intersection design. And then just a couple of other, well, I'll stop there, see if there's any further questions, I guess. No, okay, great. There was also a question about servicing Grandpa's Grocery on the south side of town after the intersection's built and the center median is installed. So just to air that out a little bit. So our client's the same owner, he owns Grandpa's Groceries as well. So the plan is that this convenience store and fueling station will be constructed. The other store across the street will be removed and that parcel will be redeveloped in some other nature. So there won't be competing convenience stores across the street. Yes. I'm not following that question. Which location are you asking, Don?
Well, as far as the tanker trucks, as far as accessing the property, they'd be going on Stoltz Hill in front of the homeowners as far as access and ingress on...
Correct. They could go either. So there could be fueling trucks coming westbound and make a right turn lane on Stoltz, and then they'd come into the site. And then they could either maneuver through the site and come back out to the intersection, or if the weight restrictions lifted off the bridge further to the west, they could make that right turn onto Airport Road and head out of town that way as well. So either would be open to them. But they'd still have to abide by the right-in, right-out off of Airport Road and all the other requirements on the other streets as well.
I was just curious how much traffic would be in front of them.
Perfect. I don't know that we have a designated route, but they can come in from either. And then jump into another question or conversation that was happening amongst the commissioners about the letter in opposition. Mr. Lutz did state that he was representing the HOA. A little bit of information is that my client also owns seven lots to the north of this, which are in the HOA. And he certainly did not know that Mr. Lutz was going to represent him in testimony against his development.
The one's on the left?
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, behind.
Yeah, directly north of the proposed site and all the way up to the, towards the end of the cul-de-sac.
Yep, so I can't speak to whether he'd visited with the other members of the HOA or who the other members are, but he certainly didn't have that conversation with my client.
Yeah, and again, to address other comments that were, this is really outside the scope of this review, but just because it was brought up in common knowledge, the client did offer to purchase this undeveloped strip along the east portion of his site to be able to do some roadway improvements or improvements within that area. The asking price for an undeveloped property was around $300,000, which is really not any sort of return that you could get from that property, so it wasn't realistic offer. So just for the general discussion, there were other items that were considered while we did the site plan. But that will conclude our presentation, but welcome any questions that the commissioners might have.
That was helpful information.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the hearing's now open for members of the public to speak in favor of the application. If there's anyone here, you can come forward. Seeing no movement, the hearing's now open for members of the public to speak in opposition of the application. Come forward. Okay. No rebuttal needed, yes? Okay, seeing no further comments or questions for the applicant, I'll now close the public hearing. All further discussion will be limited between the Planning Commission and staff. All right. Do we feel like the decision criteria has been met?
It's hard to see with a diagram about the road, so that helped with Brian's explanation, what they're doing.
I also appreciate the fencing and the landscaping they're doing, like a double barrier for the lighting and the fumes or any smells or anything like that that can be a buffer, so.
Does anybody feel like they would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll move that the Planning Commission recommend that the city council approve the comprehensive plan and zoning map amendments, and that the Planning Commission approve the administrative review and conditional use permit based on the written findings in the staff report, and direct the staff report to draft an order of recommendation incorporating the findings and the conditions of approval for file number CPMA-23-30, ZMA-23-03, and AR-23-04, and CU-2303.
I'll second that. We have a first and a second, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, the motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to the second public hearing of the night, public hearing for planning file CU-23-04. City attorney, would you mind?
Yes, this hearing will also be pursuant to 197.797. Started the hearing, everyone will be asked to disclose any ex parte conflict of interest or bias. Memorized it. Testimony may be in oral or written form, but must be directed towards the criteria outlined in the staff report, the comprehensive plan of the city's land use regulations. Any issue raised must be accompanied by statements and evidence sufficient enough to allow the commission and commission and any party members an opportunity to respond. Please note that failure to raise an issue, including constitutional issues, by the close of the hearing will prevent any appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals.
Thank you. All right, so planning file CU-23-04. It's a proposed development and operation of a car wash facility for the property located on the east side of South Saniam Highway, west of Burdell Boulevard, and north of Walgreens in the highway commercial zone. So is there any conflict of interest, ex parte communication, or bias to report? All right, seeing none, I'll turn it over to staff for the report.
So before you tonight is a proposed conditional use permit to develop and operate a car wash. As just a quick refresher, at the last Planning Commission meeting, a proposed comprehensive plan and zoning map amendment was approved by the Planning Commission to change the zoning designation and comprehensive plan designation from mixed-use to highway commercial. And that designation and proposal was approved by the city council last week. So the property is now officially designated as highway commercial, which means that it is eligible to apply for a car wash development subject to a conditional use permit. The property also underwent a minor land partition as part of the last hearing in September. And so the now total area of development is a 1.33-acre site. The site is currently largely vacant, with the only improvement being the access road that provides the truck access from Walgreens to the north to allow for exit onto the highway. There are opportunities for public facilities on the, in South Saniam Highway as well as in Burdell Boulevard as well. In terms of the development proposal, obviously, it is for a car wash. It would be an automated car wash. In terms of circulation, the access into the property is only through Burdell Boulevard. So they would access from Burdell and immediately enter into the drive aisle where there is a bank of vacuum stations. And so the patrons can choose to utilize the vacuum stations first, or they can enter, drive through the site towards Highway 20 to the entrance line for the car wash. So they would circle all the way through to where the existing access road is, circle around and then go into the queuing lane where they would have the pay station. They would then circle around and go through the automated car wash area. And once the car wash is done, they will exit back out into that main drive aisle where they can either, A, go back and choose to vacuum after the fact and then exit off of Burdell Boulevard, or they would be able to utilize the existing access road to drive to the north to exit back onto South Saniam Highway. That access road is again used by Walgreens, and it is also utilized for the property to the north, which would be the eventual development of the Dairy Queen as well. And so that is a shared access road where there is an easement identified over the property. In terms of parking, car washes again do not have a required parking designation. And so you generally do it based off of what is proposed as an average shift. In the application, the applicant identified that on average, they'll have three employees on the site to run the facility. And then during peak times, as needed, it could go up to six employees. So there are three... times, as needed, it could go up to six employees. So there are three parking spaces that are provided, and then if necessary, the, I guess the vacuum stations would be able to be used as parking spaces for the employees, but I'm not sure how that'll work for the management. There is, in addition to the the drive-through tunnel for the the car wash as well, there's a manager's office and a restroom as well. In terms of operations, we've kind of gone through the access. The operations would generally be during the day. There's no overnight operations. They are proposing a seven-day-a-week operation schedule, and it is automated, and so it is within the fully enclosed building is where all the equipment is, where all the noise is generated, and then at the end of the night, the doors do close to fully enclose the building for security purposes. We do have a lengthy staff report that goes over the project in much more detail, but generally speaking, we've talked about access, general circulation on the site, the use and operation of it. And so with that, I will conclude my staff report, and I can answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions? Doesn't seem like there are any. All right, if there's no questions of staff, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing and welcome the applicant to come forward and provide testimony.
The applicant is available online.
Hi there. This is Ralph Warner with CSA Planning in Medford, Oregon. Our offices are 4497 Brown Ridge Terrace in in Medford. We're here on behalf of the applicant, Clash LLC, proposing to build a automated drive-through car wash operated by GoCarWash is. We've designed a site and a parcel to accommodate the use to circulate traffic through and provide an abundance of queuing space to accommodate the the cars without interfering with the traffic and loading area for the adjacent Walmart in in the back. There is a shared easement that there is between the properties that's available, but we did want to make a separate driveway approach to to try to separate that traffic out and provide some perimeter buffering between the and landscaping between the the two uses to dress it up. There's a considerable amount of landscaping along the the highway front edge, which continues the landscaping that Walgreens has already provided, and that will fill on down the line towards the new Dairy Queen. The car wash is kind of small management office and and mechanical spaces, and include, in addition to the the tunnel, the drive-through. And there is a way to get out of the queuing lane if you decided the last minute that you don't want to actually pay and go through the car wash. There, it's also an available way for the garbage enclosure to be approached, and all the the vacuum are going to be attached to a a centralized system that will be enclosed to keep sound down. You have architectural plans and renderings provided as well to show. These are fairly attractive car wash uses. They want to bring people in. And the design is is intended to to do that and to complement the the commercial standards and meet the city standards. So we're excited to get this project going and also thank the Plan Commission for its recommendation on the plan amendment zone change last time. Stand for questions if you have any, and like to reserve time for rebuttal as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Warner, I have a, I have, this is Commissioner McClain. I have a question. How many of these car washes has your client built?
I personally, we've got about a half dozen. I worked with them on so far. I know that the GoCarWash is a national chain, and locally they acquired a local company that had several that was, the wash and goes down here in Southern Oregon, and so they're expanding throughout the state. But we have them in Central Point, White City, Medford, a few in Medford, so I don't know the overall number that they have nationwide, though.
Well, if approved, how long does it take you guys to build one of these?
They get right on it, so it'll be up and running in, you know, within the year. They're paying, paying on the the debt in the meantime, so they want to get revenue coming in the other way.
Understand that. Thank you.
I think there was a question that was raised during the, just a matter of interest in the plan amendment zone change recommendation. Somebody asked if we recycle the water, and we certainly do. You know, all, all the car wash has a filtering system, and it takes the water, recycles it back, and, you know, so only a small portion actually gets sent out down the drain.
Anybody else? Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
All right. I will now open the hearing to members of the public to speak in favor of the application. Please come forward. Seeing none, I'll open the hearing to members of the public to speak in opposition of the application. All right. No opposition, so thank you. Seeing no further comments or questions for the applicant, I'll now close the public hearing. Thank you. So all further discussion will be limited between the Planning Commission and staff. How do we feel? Do we feel like the decision criteria has been met? I feel like a lot of our questions were answered before the prior.
I think Lebanon needs one of those. It's time.
Does anybody feel like they'd like to make a motion?
Shyla can make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve file number CU-23-04. I move that the Planning Commission approve the proposed conditional use permit, adopting the written findings contained in the staff report with the conditions of development, and direct the staff to draft an order of decision incorporating the findings and the condition of approval.
All right, we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you. All right. Thank you. All right, any commission business comments?
I do have a couple of quick updates. At the City Council meeting last week, feels like forever ago, we did a work session on psilocybin, which was approved in Oregon as Measure 109 in 2021 or '22, something like that. It was permitted under the state's system, and cities had the right to opt out of it, to prohibit it, but it needs to be done through a voter referral. After the discussion with the City Council, City Council voted to move forward with an opt-out voter referral for both manufacturing facilities, which grows the the mushrooms and and processes them into other edibles and uses, and also to opt out of the service centers, which would be administering the the product to individuals as part of an administration session. As part of their their action as well, they did identify that in case the voters do actually choose not to opt out and allow the facilities to occur in Lebanon, that we draft up a time, place, and manner ordinance of what we would do to regulate the psilocybin facilities if we were to end up having them in our city based off of the voter choice. So that will be becoming before the Planning Commission will be working through it together and and taking care of that over the next seven months or so. In addition to that, we had a bit of a code clarification conversation regarding recreational vehicle parks. In 2018, an individual requested to be able to do a private recreational vehicle park, like a KOA. In the city, at that point in time, code evaluation identified that we only allow for publicly owned RV parks. Request came in a couple months ago. We looked at the code. Turns out that there is a path forward to allow for privately owned RV parks within the highway commercial zone. We wanted to clarify the record for the City Council because it was brought before them in 2018 to identify whether they wanted to allow for privately owned parks in the city. At that time, they said they did not. Last week, they reaffirmed that they do not, and so we are also going to be bringing forward an ordinance possibly as early as next meeting, which is why I'm letting you all know about it, to to clarify that code and to clean that up for a bit. So that would be the item that we have currently scheduled for the meeting in November, if we are able to get that drafted and done. If not, we don't currently have any applications that have been submitted for Planning Commission review. So I may be contacting you all about canceling the meeting if we're not able to get the the ordinance in place.
It's right around Thanksgiving anyway.
I know. Got to prep for turkey time. And so that that concludes my report.
All right. Anybody else have any comments?
I do. So we had a comment about Vaughn Lane in regard to the gas station proposal, and the intersection of Vaughn Lane and South Main, in my opinion, is a problem. Every time I drive that, it's difficult to to see what's coming. You got to creep into the intersection. I was talking to Ron a little bit about that via email in preparation for today's meeting. Apparently, there's been public comment also objecting besides that particular comment in regard to the gas station thing. My feeling is that this needs to be corrected so it doesn't happen again. We've got more development going on around Lebanon. We we shouldn't have additional developments that that cause obscured intersections. I feel it's a safety hazard. I think it's something that the code is not sufficient in keeping from happening again.
So one of the things, after you and I emailed back and forth, we, I looked through the development code a little bit, and South Main is one of the streets that's not on our list of additional setbacks, which I don't know why in the code. But if you look at like Airport Road, Oak Street, and some of those. So one of the things the commission could do is is incorporate South Main into that, to where you get a bigger setback on those. Right now, all the buildings meet the setbacks, and whether good, bad, or otherwise, they do meet setbacks, and they meet the site triangle distances that you're supposed to meet. So if you want further setbacks, you know, on these bigger intersections and whatnot, that needs to be a code change that you guys come up with. So we're more than willing to entertain that, and I don't disagree with you that it's hard to see, but that's kind of typical of most of our intersections, if you just drive them. And what's confusing about it is you get there where the crosswalks at, and you stop behind the crosswalk like you're supposed to, which is Oregon law. And Oregon law also allows you to creep up into the crosswalk as much as you need to, as long as you've stopped. Same thing on any intersection, even though there's not a crosswalk there, there is an invisible crosswalk at every intersection. And so the same thing applies to all those. It's just the paint on the ground gets confusing. But if you drive any of our streets, that you're you're going to find that in most cases that is, that is happening. Now, that's not to say that we can't do something different with with setbacks. I'm totally open to that. I think Kelly would be, too.
I I think that's fine. If it's a quick and easy fix that that you have an idea for, we we might be able to to entertain that sooner. If it takes more evaluation, we are going through significant code updates over the next year and a half or so for the housing production strategy implementation, and we can incorporate this into that code change as well.
I think that's where we would look at it, and probably use this body to kind of come in and, all right, what are our major streets? What are our major arterials, collectors? And look at the list of streets that we have there currently, and are there other streets that you want to add into that, where you have a bigger setback? You know, maybe it's a corner lot setback from intersections. Those are all things that we can take a look at.
Well, my concern right now is that there's potential other developments that are either slated or about to be approved or whatever, that are going to create that same intersection condition in in other places, and some of those may not even be substantial enough to go through the the Planning Commission.
Oh, if we're going to fix it, now's the time to do it.
Yeah. Do 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 all, do all proposals have that sightline analysis thing?
Yes. So if you're at an intersection, my staff goes out and they measure. In fact, I was out doing that this week, looking at where a fence was going to be put in to, on a, on a corner lot, to see if it met sight distance. And we actually ended up, they wanted it at 10 feet off, and we said, off their building, and we said, no, you got to be eight in order to meet sightline distance. So we are out there doing that. We can only do so much, though, with that, right? So if you meet the the guidance on what we use Ashto and ODOT for sight distance, then that's about all we can do.
I think it'd be pretty easy to, for the city of Lebanon, say, you know, no building or permanent obscuring object within 20 feet of that sightline, and then boom, we're we're taken care of from here on forward.
Yeah, and that's, that's something, we we can do kind of an exercise in that, and I can show you how that's done at some point, if you want to look at that. But I would, I would, I would think that it'd be a good idea on your major streets, for sure.
Do we need to add that to our agenda?
It's, to be honest with you, it's going to take me a little bit of time to put something like that together.
Yeah.
Size of the property, I mean, all like, the racquetball, that is a
It's terrible.
Several of them on Second Street, even when you're coming off Main Street because of all the parking on both sides. If you're in a car, you can't see somebody about get hit, but it's the flow of traffic, you know, all of that, that happens all over the place. More commercial places that we have are out further. Well, we have commercial
The downtown is a a different beast all in itself. It it has no setback requirements.
Sidewalk.
Yeah. And so even if new development were were to be built in the the central business area, it would have zero setback requirement because it's meant to be right there. In in most of our commercial corridor, yeah, you have the parking lot in front and then the buildings in the back. There's some properties that have the buildings that sort of sit on the corner and and then have the parking lot in the back, but there there are national standards with, you know, the acronym soup that I can't remember, that that evaluates these based off of, you know, speed, sight distance requirements, obstruction views, intersections, intersections and driveways. All of that's evaluated by by a national standard that we do apply, and we verify, and we sight check. And beyond that, it becomes a a policy decision of how to address it. Like Ron did say, we we do have quite a full plate right now, and so to make a special exception of this instead of just putting it as part of the the other code amendments is something that we would have to discuss and and figure out how to to incorporate that. But we are working on, actively working on code amendments for the next year and a half, and we can definitely incorporate that as a to-do list in those amendments.
My concern is in the next year and a half, then how many more intersections are going to go in like that?
I could tell you none or all of them. I I don't know. That's, that's, I mean, you can, I mean, we could try and do some
What we
changes to that, I suppose, but.
What we can do is during the development review team meetings, which is the pre-application portion, when they're still in site design, we can identify that that is of a significant concern of the Planning Commission, and to have them maybe address and and provide a concern of the planning commission, and to have them maybe address and provide a larger buffer on the intersections, and proactively work with the developers to make sure that that's addressed in this interim time. We can take that longer, more proactive. But we can't speak to how many would be, we could just try to address it as they come in, which is what we do, you know, with all applications that come in, as the planning commission provides us guidance through the comments that you make, we incorporate those conversations as part of the development review team and pre-application meetings to let them know there's these barriers, or there's these concerns, and you should address it ahead of time. And we can do that with this as well. I think that might be a good middle ground.
Yeah, I, I see exactly what you're saying, but it's the crosswalk that's confused everybody. You've got a big tree there, we actually, when they put their landscaping in out there, told them no, landscaping can't be any more than 36 inches high. I mean, we've done a variety of things out there to try and make that better, but it still meets criteria that we call standard. Now, whether it's, whether you want to change that or not, that's, that's, yeah, that's up to this body to decide. And I would say that South Main probably needs to be on that list of streets with bigger setbacks. I don't disagree with that at all, but that's what we have before us, so hard to do anything different without changes coming from here. Does that make sense? Tried. Yes, they do.
I don't know, to me, it just doesn't seem like it's that hard to fix. Maybe I'm ignorant.
Well, I don't, I don't think it's that hard of a fix.
It is in front of us.
When you're, you're thinking, I mean, which, which streets would you do this on?
Well, that's the thing, is it, it's not that hard.
It's a big, it's so, are we looking at collectors' arterials? Because the same standard, I mean, you still have your setbacks, but I'm not sure I would do, say, a 25-foot setback on a residential street for that same thing on low speeds, low volume traffic, where I would on, say, hey, I think you should do this on an arterial or a collector or whatever. So it's going to take some legwork from this committee to decide what you want to add to it, if that's what you want to do.
It's an easy fix to add a street to the existing list that says these require larger setbacks. It's not, there are more things to consider if we're talking about more of a systematic change. And that, that's where it's, we need to be cognizant of, it takes more than just a, it's not just a simple fix when we're talking about the entire city versus a single road addition.
I mean, we're actively out on all these, and we're, it senses, probably over the last two, three years, I mean, we're, we've actually hired surveying crews, come out and go, all right, do we have the right alignment here, is this right? I mean, we're out checking them, so they meet the current standard that we have, but if we want to change that, and do bigger setbacks, then there needs to be a code change.
Do we know, has there been an incidence of accidents at that particular intersection?
Not that I'm aware of, I'm sure we could probably pull accident reports. Our primary accidents happen at signalized intersections. I mean, we have a few here and there at non-signalized, but the majority of your accidents are on signalized intersections. It's because people don't pay attention. They run the red light all the time.
Almost got plowed today.
South Main Head Start wouldn't qualify that to be.
No, that's the one we looked at, we tried to get ODOT to let us do that, because they dictate what, what zones can be labeled as school zones, and they didn't consider that a school, because you don't have the, you don't have the pedestrian traffic. Now, I've had some moms call me and say, I walk my kid to school and people are driving too fast, this needs to be a school zone, and I said, I don't disagree with you, but we could put it up as a school zone, and then it would go, if somebody got cited for that, and it wasn't truly a legal school zone, there would be no recourse, so.
Right before that is a school zone, and it doesn't matter anyway.
Yes.
I live off of Cedars, so trying to get off Cedars during school hours, and the traffic's better.
Traffic's, traffic is bad. There's a lot of traffic.
Second Street, I know.
All right, so just to make sure that we're wrapping up what you're, the concern that was brought up, and can we add that into the review process over the, you know, next year and a half? I feel like maybe that since it's the national standards and adheres to that, that we, making a decision based on, which I don't disagree, I live very near this intersection as well, and it is a problem, but I feel like maybe that could be reviewed with some more evidence and further, you know, information, like the more things to consider, like you mentioned, later on down the road when we have more information versus one email, if that is okay?
We can absolutely incorporate it in the code changes when we'll actually have a consultant that's going to be able to do the work and have the professional backing behind it as well.
Great. All right? Is that okay? Okay. Great, thank you. All right, that's it. The next regular meeting is tentatively scheduled for November 15th, and this meeting is now adjourned at 7:16. Thank you, guys.